Or volunteer to, one, to lead us in a prayer reading or thought as we begin our meeting, and one, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Do we have any volunteers?
I don't see any. All lead us in the pledge.
Okay, and I'll do a prayer reading or thought. I actually have a reading in mind that I will, I will pull up. Just one second. This is just a quote from John Adams. It's one of my favorite quotes. And he says, "Pasterity, you will never know how much it costs the present generation to preserve your freedom. I hope you will make good use of it." I think it's just, let's speak for itself. It's always good to, oh, and then he goes on, "If you do not, I shall repent in heaven that I ever took half the pains to preserve it." So, just grateful for the sacrifices that have brought us to this day and allow us to do the work we're doing here tonight.
All right, if you can, if you will, stand to repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We will now, actually, we'll do some recognitions before we build our agenda. It's, I guess, my privilege to, to recognize the Utah County Employee of the Year. And I guess I'll start off by announcing who that is. It goes to Ben Vanoye from our Civil Division in the Legal Department. Hey, Ben. I wish I was in there. I'm just, just around the corner here in the other building, but Ben, Ben really deserves this. He deserves that round of applause I heard there in the room. I'm going to read, actually, I'm just going to summarize. This is the same nomination that we received when he was nominated for Employee of the Month from almost his entire department. And it says, "To the Board of County Commissioners, the current pandemic created an administrative, regulatory, and legal quagmire of questions and issues. During this time, an exceptional employee and public servant of the county has risen to the challenge and gone above and beyond the normal duties and responsibilities of his position to provide critical assistance to the county. Ben Vanoye, a deputy county attorney, is genuinely impressive. We would like to make a few observations about his character and performance in general and how he has helped the county during this challenging time." And we've read this letter before. It goes on to say what a team player he is, how intelligent he is, how willing he is to pick the load off of other people when they're sick or they're out. So, it's, it's really a ringing endorsement and, you know, it's not always the opportunity that I have had firsthand insight into all of the great employees that we recognize. But because Ben works in the Civil Division and this issue that they're nominating him for of how well he managed the different regulatory challenges that we had and the late night phone calls on, on COVID, I can, I can also add my endorsement to this, that he did an incredible job helping us and serving. He kind of worked around the clock. So, so thank you, Ben. Well deserved. Knowing Ben, I am speaking to the podium to give a speech. Is that right?
Yes, he's had it.
Okay.
Well, first off, I am surprised my wife could keep this a secret. And thank you, commissioners. It's truly humbling. I didn't have enough time to think up anything funny to say, so just thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve the county. I love my job. I love the people I work with. And just, just truly from the bottom of my heart, thank you, and I look forward to many years working at the Civil Division going forward. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
Thank you. We will now turn to one more recognition, and I'll turn the time over to Commissioner, Commissioner Ivey for the Heart of Utah Award recipient for December.
Thank you, Commissioner Ainge. As a commission, we've established the Heart of Utah Award, which is a recognition of county residents who truly personify what it means to be Utah's heart. We hope to recognize outstanding residents on a frequent basis and remind people that there is good news to share about the great place in which we live. The second Heart of Utah Award recipient is Stephanie Larson. As she made her way up here, I'm going to read a little bit about Stephanie. Stephanie is the chief executive officer and founder of Encircle, the largest LGBTQ+ resource center in Utah. Encircle has locations in Provo, Salt Lake City, and St. George with plans for continued expansion, and I believe Logan is next on the radar. Encircle's mission is to bring the family and community together to enable our LGBTQ+ youth to thrive. Encircle provides free services to these youth, such as therapy, friendship circles, daily programs, and drop-in hours. Stephanie exemplifies what it truly means and looks like to be the heart of Utah County. She has elevated Utah County and its communities through her consistent acts of empathy and care. She has touched the lives of so many LGBTQ+ youth, their loved ones, parents, and countless others. More than anything, the way she conducts her life is a perfect example of Encircle's mission statement, which is no sides, only love. And that is something Stephanie truly exemplifies in all that she does for our community. In addition to this award, she has been recognized as the 2017 Human Rights Campaign Award recipient, the 2018 Sundown Film Festival Award recipient, and was recently awarded the Silicon Slopes Community Hero Award in 2018. And she was named one of 11 upstanders by Starbucks Coffee, recognizing her as an example of what it means to have courage in today's America. In December of 2017, Encircle hosted the first annual Encircle Summit, which has now become the largest LGBTQ+ youth summit in the United States. Stephanie has also greatly supported the creation of the Love Loud Festival. She is a Brigham Young University graduate with degrees in Family Sciences and Law, and while practicing in Washington, DC, she represented abused and neglected children on Capitol Hill. Her, her life is truly an example of dedication to the marginalized and victims of our society and finding a way to help them thrive in our local communities. Stephanie and her husband Mitch have six children and live in Orem, Utah. Stephanie prefers the pronouns she/her, and she is absolutely wonderful and a dear friend of mine, and I'm truly grateful to her efforts, and she is the second Heart of Utah recipient. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you very much. That makes me sound way cooler than I am, so thank you.
Same, but we've got, we've got a certificate and awards for you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Okay, after those recognitions, we'll now go through the process of building the rest of our agenda. Anything that we do not hold for discussion will be approved on the consent agenda. Looking first to the consent items to see if any commissioner has any consent items they would like to hold.
I, I don't, Tanner.
Eighteen, if, if for discussion or, or unless if you've looked at the schedules, we want to, I would recommend Schedule B.
I am happy to do what either of you two want to do on this one.
We can just approve that one for B.
Okay.
So, we're just making a note, right? That's just going on consent, noting that it's Schedule B. Anything else on?
I don't have any others. I believe, we'll see, Dave's not here. Rob's here. On 22 and 24, the reason why those are so long is because of statutory limit, uh, limits, right? That's the reason why we're clear out till February on those letters of interest. Is that, is that the reason why they're so long?
I have not looked at those, but it's Rob Moore, Utah County Attorney's Office, but I'm assuming.
It's notices of vacancy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a statutory process, so, yeah.
That, so that fits within. It's not an extended. It's just, okay. I'm, I'm fine with that. I just, that was just a question on that.
Okay, anything else on consent?
Nope.
No.
Hearing none. Obviously, the public hearings, we will, we'll be having those. So, we need to hold the agenda items as well, so we'll hold regular Agenda 1A, regular Agenda B, regular Agenda C, 1. I think, you know, we should hold 2 and 3 and 4. My understanding is we need to strike number 12.
Correct.
So, we'll strike 12.
11 needs, uh...
Sorry, you cut out there. You're saying 11 needs to be held?
For discussion.
Okay, great. I'll hold.
On number five, I'm looking to Robert. Is there anything that we need, can we just leave that on consent, or is that something that needs to be? Action? Okay, so we need to hold number five as well.
Okay. Okay, I said I'd like to hold 15. Are there any others?
Hold number 14.
Okay, does that sound good for our agenda?
Works for me.
Yep.
All right. In that case, we will move back to consent agenda. Well, actually, no, we just move right into our first public hearing. This is a, there's a public hearing that was noticed for today to discuss amending and increasing the 2020 county budget in the county's general fund and various other budgetary funds and transferring unencumbered or unextended appropriation balances from one department and a fund to another in the same fund.
I'll make a motion that we open the public hearing as stated in public hearing number one.
Second.
We have a motion and second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 We're now in the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
None, none here.
Commissioner Ainge, let me make an announcement for the Zoom. If anyone on the Zoom is looking to make a public comment during the public hearing portion, they'll need to raise their hand and also have their display name on Zoom as, as a, as a name that can actually be called on.
Okay, great. I think as we wait, just to see, because we gave some late technical instructions there, is there any comments from the Clerk Auditor's Office on this one?
Yeah, at this point, I, I would love for me to be able to say, I feel totally confident that this is final and not going to change, but because of pending legislation with the CARES Act that's currently in the legislature right now, I am actually, when it comes time to the actual item, I'm going to recommend that we punt this to the last meeting of the year. Hopefully, all crossing our fingers, we have some answers out of Congress by then, because really CARES Act funds and the use of them is the last thing pending on this.
Do we have anyone with their hand up?
Nobody in the Zoom room has their hand up, and nobody here in the room. Wait, hold on, we've got one now. Looks like we have Jonathan Vajerano, and he's got his hand up, and we're giving you the ability to unmute yourself now.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Just, I don't know if this is the public comment for all of the items, so is this for item?
This is just for the 2020 amended budget.
Okay, nevermind, sorry about that.
Okay, seeing no additional public comment, I've entered in the motion.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Passes three zero, we have closed the public hearing. I'm happy to have any discussion on regular agenda, item number A. I've been tracking the same thing that I heard Amelia mention, that CARES Act, sounds like they're getting close, and there may be an extension of CARES Act funding that could impact what our year-end transfer looks like, but no final package announced today, so we may need to continue this.
Yeah, I spoke to several members of our federal delegation. Senators Lee and Romney both feel that something will get passed, and Congressman Curtis is optimistic as well. But right now, we don't have detail, so it's hard for me to make those final adjustments for the year when I don't have those final details yet. Everything else that, everything else is pretty much done, we're just kind of waiting on these CARES Act dollars.
Could we go over 2020, the 2020 budget in the way of, the reason why we hold this is because there are times we know that there's going to be some out-of-balances.
Right.
So if we could just identify some of the out-of-balances, I think that would be helpful for us, you know, as we go through into, because we're really waiting to see what's going to happen federally, but there are things that we know today.
Right.
In which there are some out-of-balances that need to be corrected.
So one of the big things is just the COVID response and the CARES Act in general. For example, we as a county spent a lot of money in protecting the public, in putting up shields between public services and people, building a more robust IT system so that people can work remotely so we continue to serve the employees and the citizens. So things like that that are unforeseen, and also any staffing plan changes that happen throughout the year. Sometimes that means more people are added, sometimes that means that a position was unfilled for several months as someone moved on to a new position and a new person was hired, and those are going to change those numbers. So this gives us the ability to kind of shore up those numbers towards the end of the year and say, we had a budget planned for 2020, but we're never going to fall directly right within that every time. And so this gives us the ability to adjust that towards the end of the year. This year is a prime example of that, but this is also not an uncommon thing for those listening. This is something we do every year at the end of the year, we adjust the budget based off of actuals rather than projections.
Okay, I'll make a motion then that we continue item regular agenda A1 to our December thirty-first, December thirtieth, 2020 meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue regular agenda item number A1 to December thirtieth. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes three zero. We now have a public hearing to discuss the adoption of a resolution fixing the salaries of Utah County elected officials. I'm happy to give a little bit of an introduction to this one before we go into the public hearing. There's components to this that are new, there's components to this that are not new, so I think it's fair, if people are going to comment, kind of hear if there's anything on the table or not. You know, there's two components to this. One is as it relates to all of the elected officials, the other is as it relates to the county commission, and we have not had a chance to discuss this really at all as members of the county commission, so I'll share a few thoughts. The first, as it relates to the other positions, you know, our human resources director, as we geared up for this budget process, and then we've been talking about market studies and cost of living, he really encouraged us to look at the salaries of elected officials and compare them to surrounding counties. And I think that this makes some sense for a couple of reasons. Well, first, I want to acknowledge the incredible work that's been done by each of the elected officials during this very unpredictable and difficult year. There are many times where I know all three of us have had phone calls at all hours of the night or morning, working through positions with each of our independently elected officials. And, but I don't, this is not really what this is about, I think it's, from my perspective, I'm looking forward to the elections in 2022, and I want to make sure that we attract a strong pool of candidates, and that those currently serving office want to have a desire to seek reelection if they'd like to and continue serving. And so in 2022, we have the sheriff, we have the clerk auditor, and we have the county attorney who are up for reelection. And so there's an attachment to the budget item, but I was proposing that we adjust those salaries in 2021, so as they gear up for 2022, and it puts people on notice who might run for those offices. For the recorder, the treasurer, the surveyor, and the assessor, those positions just got reelected this year in 2020. So I think those who ran did so without an expectation that there would be a change in pay, and so I think we can delay those ones, but I propose that we still in 2022 conduct a review and have an adjustment that goes into effect in 2023, so that that is also set for the 2024 election. So there's some kind of rotation there, getting ready for new elections. At the county commission level, I also want to focus on what is the best approach to get the best pool of candidates, and ironically, I think this could be the exact opposite. It's possible that by reducing pay, we get a better pool of candidates. This is a point that I've heard made publicly by all three of the commissioners, and, you know, I think that it essentially said, that this idea that a three-quarter time or part-time opportunity could give different types of candidates than we've had in the past be willing to step up and serve. I think Commissioner-elect Sakovic has even, in a way, supported this. Of course, it was in a five-member council format, as was when Commissioner Lee was supporting something like that. I'll give a little bit more background why I think, I think a commissioner job is, it can be very demanding, and, but here's some thoughts on the three-quarter time nature or compensation, or how we kind of market this position for a potential candidate. If you look at the mayors and city council members who served part-time throughout this county, I think it's incredible, the caliber of people who are willing to step up. We have business owners, engineers, full-time parents, healthcare workers, law enforcement personnel, serving as mayors. Over the past couple of months, I've needed to interact with Provo City Council for a couple of pressing issues, and the council members who reached out to me was a professor from BYU, an experienced, excellent attorney here in town, and someone professionally trained in urban and city planning. And I came away from those dialogues feeling like the city of Provo was very fortunate to have these caliber of people serving on their council, all part-time in nature, but all putting in a lot of work during these critical issues. We also have a part-time state legislature, and up until a couple of years ago, my House representative had a medical degree and a law degree, and practiced both. And my state senator right now is a small business owner, and not only does that mean that we have people who understand real world in policymaking, it also, they feel the impact of regulation. That state senator who's a small business owner, he felt what it was like for business closures during COVID, and so I think that that is important, and those are positive principles. And I also just think that elected positions, you know, especially in the council level and the chief executive level, this shouldn't be a long-term career. We take turns. If we could vote as, to put term limits in place at the county level, I would devote to do that. That's a state-level decision, however. And so I think that when public officials begin to see their job, especially in this type of role, as a job they can't afford to lose, I think we're worse off in those situations. We tend to get more populism. We, people stop solving difficult problems like we see in Congress, and we get less integrity and intellectual honesty and less political courage, and we get more political antics and ideologues and empty rhetoric. So that's at a principled level, again, I've heard all three commissioners and the Commissioner-elect speak to this or support this in one way or another. I don't know how we get there. I would be open to a dialogue to think if, you know, if we're setting this up for the next election, if that's been the principle, like I said, for the other positions, we could have a change that goes into effect for the next election. I would hate to rip the rug out from underneath anyone or any of us as we, you know, begin to plan for, you know, our lives, and we have one who just won reelection or won election, I don't think it would be fair to just immediately reduce that salary, but I do think that we could gradually step it down. I would be willing to make that change. I don't know what the transition looks like. I do think that as we look forward to those next election cycle, we could potentially have a better pool of candidates, as we've all said, if we did something like this.
So I'll jump into this. I've had conversations with Ralph, Ralph Barnes about it, and back and forth on what would be appropriate, what would, what does the market hold, what's the data, what's the points of interest with it? And the conversations that we have had went along the lines that it's interesting that the ones that we have down here, that there's no adjustment, they've just went through an election process in which that was intended, and they knew that that was the salary, the basis for it. And of course, two years ago, all of us, the others went through an election process knowing the same thing, and there was, there's no adjustment to it, and sometimes it turns into a political football more than it does anything else. And so the thought was, was that Ralph would, in an election year, for those officers that are up for election, that they would take the opportunity from Ralph to give a parameter and say, this is what the salary is, this is what the market is, and there's a range in between, and allow for the candidates, allow for the candidates to say, well, this is where it's at, and this is the range in between, and then they can take it out to who ultimately is paying this bill, and that's the people, and they can state, they can state during the election process of where, what they feel is comfortable, and if the people sustain that and vote them into office, that would be a forum that would be easy for all of us to say, okay, you know, they were elected into office, this is what they said all along the campaign trail, and then, you know, if there's differences between the two, then the people can sort that out, however they feel with it. But that would at least give, you know, give a certain amount of reason to it, and then there's some certainty to it as well as individuals are coming in. I have a hard time with the projection, frankly, Tanner, of, you know, everyone saying that they're in favor of certain models or certain ideas when it's apples and oranges completely across the board. It's just a projection point with not based in any data or reality, because when we're talking about the commission ones down here, this one, two, and three, it goes against what our HR director has said, it goes against what we look across the state, it's not based in a certain amount of reality, it's based, it really looks like a certain political vendetta than it does look like something done with reason behind it. And that's where I have the hardest part when I look at these, when I look at these numbers, because again, there's no data on this. If you look at the data, you'd have to go back, you'd have to go back to Ralph with HR, and he actually recommends differently. And so that's, that is very problematic for me to, you know, to see this coming in. We've gone through elections in this county, and I think that the people have spoken on multiple issues when it comes to the election process and what they see, what they'll support, what they'll do, and unfortunately, I'm not seeing that reflected here at all. I'm seeing, I'm seeing a different twist to it, to try to draw out or to bring out some future political stunt that may happen along with it. And so it's not, again, it's not based in reality, it's just a projection, a projection on conversations that were had on different topics, not based in reality. And so I have, I have problems when I, when I see this at all, and I would prefer that we go through a model, even with the others, where it's put out, the people know about it, it's not the commissioners always saying, this is what the salary is, we allow for the people to speak up and say, hey, I can support that, and if they run on that, then that should be fine.
I'm happy to.
Go ahead.
What was that?
Is your mic working?
I think so. I just thought I heard someone.
No, Dave.
That was Ralph Barnes, in HR.
Yeah. Did you have a comment, Ralph?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to say, just a couple of things. As I did go through the analysis for 2021, you know, compensation, it did, you know, stand out to me that the elected officials in the county have significantly, you know, fallen behind what other, you know, counties are doing. You know, currently, our elected officials are lower than Weber and also Davis. And just, if you just took a really high-level look, you would think that we should fall somewhere between, you know, Davis and Salt Lake, or be closer to Davis. But anyway, long story short, we're pretty much the bottom right now. And you can make the argument of how and why, you know, elected officials should or should not get an increase, I totally get all that. And it's, you know, true, as Commissioner Lee said, that I think the safest model is where you have had to pay in, you know, place for the election. And so I think it's very safe to say the ones that have, you know, just been elected, absolutely, you know, we should hold on those. And a little more in the middle on those who are halfway through their term, only because I feel like we're so far behind already. You know, sixteen percent or more is where we're, we're not even coming, you know, close to keeping up with wage growth in, you know, local government only. And so I think there is an argument, you know, to make a move sooner than later, but I also do understand the need to, you know, tie it to an election. I think that makes a lot of sense. The last thing is that if, on, you know, the commissioner model, if, and I haven't actually seen all of that, but if that was a case where the expectation of, you know, three-quarter time, then obviously it should be a lower rate, but if nothing changed it, I actually, you know, recommend an increase to all the elected officials, was, you know, part of the recommendation that I had in October. So I'm more than happy to provide, you know, data that supports a certain rate of wage, and even the wages that I have in, you know, the recommendation are on the low side, they're still not, they're still pretty conservative. So, you know, whatever you guys need as far as those, you know, types of recommendation, but I do think the key is, you know, the timing, when is, when does it make the most sense to make these changes?
And Commissioner Lee, just one thing, I'm sensitive to you feeling like, you know, anything was taken out of context, so I'll be clear, that what I was referring to was the five-member commission model that was sponsored by you and Commissioner-elect Sakovic, that is what took to kind of a three-quarter time. I think the proposed pay was seventy-one or seventy-two thousand dollars a year for commissioners under that model. And I will totally admit, that is a very different context than if we still have three commissioners. There's more work to spread around to the three than if there were five, and so there's a lot of arguments there, there's context matters, and I think that all I was trying to say though is, I know that And I think that, all I was trying to say, though, is I know that as that plan was articulated, even though you were talking about the five-commission model, you made the statement that I agree with, that one of the benefits of going to this three-quarter time model is that it brings this new group of people, it expands the pie or the pool of people who'd be willing to run. And whether you have three or five, there's a workload issue, and so I'm happy to talk through that. That's why I presented this like a discussion. But, you know, whether it's three or five, I think that same principle of it expanding the pool would still apply. But I'd be curious what your thoughts are on that.
Well, I mean, that's interesting that you go back to that because that model, we spent time and money to go out there and promote that idea with, within the county, and we couldn't get enough signatures to put it on the ballot. So in essence, it failed, it failed to go on the ballot. And what I heard over and over, as we were going out there and trying to collect those signatures, was we do not want to increase government even to a five, and we want to keep it the same. And so to compare it and say, well, now we like this form of it that the people didn't support, we couldn't find enough support in there, and so therefore we like this component part of it, but we want to keep this other workload side. It does, they don't match. They don't match up at all. It's hard to square that off. And to do it, you know, just on a random and say, let's go to a certain salary level without data, and as Ralph says there, it's not supported, even in his analysis, it looks, it looks off. Especially when we're looking at the others and we're saying, okay, possibly we want to increase. And I understand with Ralph on that, maybe there needs to be a certain jump so that when we get to the next one, we start at a different level. Maybe it's halfway in between his analysis, whatever it is there. I think that's a fair way to look at it. But to say that it's a fair way to look at that, but on the others, it's not fair to look at that? It doesn't, it doesn't match. It doesn't match at all. And so it's problematic to try to tie it back to something that actually the people, you know, didn't support. And they have, in this last election, supported the three-member commission forum, which we have right now. And so it's hard, it's hard to just tie that unless there's some sort of personal preference in there to do that. And that's why, that's why I'll say, it looks like it's some sort of vendetta that's attached to it to try to force something that the people didn't in one way or another, you know, attached to it. They didn't vote for it, they didn't, they didn't support it, and so it doesn't look right. And I know it looks weird because we're talking about our salaries on this thing. And I know that there'll be some out there and say, oh, well, you know, there's, you know, somebody, I'm trying to protect my own salary. Well, I signed up also knowing what it looked like. I also know that, you know, going through this process, I mean, I do this, this is full-time for me. I committed to a full-time on this thing. I'm not part-time, I'm not three-quarter time, and I put my time, all my time and energies into this. And I do that in a way that, you know, I'm here. I'm here to work for the people and do what I think is needed and necessary according to how I was elected from the people in Utah County. And that's, and so I know that there'll be barbs thrown out on that, you know, one way or the other, and that's what makes it an awkward conversation.
So my, go ahead, Tanner.
Go ahead.
So Rob, just a quick, maybe you can help refresh my memory. Shortly after I came into office, we passed a resolution, if I remember correctly it passed, concerning the adjustment of elected officials' salary changes until following an election. Is that? I don't, it was right after I came into office, we had the conversation about changing our, I can't remember if it was policy or we had to modify our code to some degree that an elected official's salary could not change until following an election.
I think this is, I think what you're talking about is during Commissioner Larry Elbertson's term, a proposal was put in place to adjust the salaries of elected officials consistent with the adjustment of salaries of career service employees. And I think that after that, that was repealed. And that may be what you're talking about, but I don't recall exactly the way you worded it, that it was tied to an election. I think, like I said, other jurisdictions have a provision that ties the elected officials' additional salaries to what county employees also get. So if they get a COLA, elected officials would get a COLA the next year. And same with, if they get a STEP, then elected officials potentially would get that too. But that was, as I understand, that was repealed a few years ago.
Yeah, that has never, that has never actually taken place. I can tell you that I've, you've seen the resolution to, you know, keep the commission up or the elected officials up with the employees when it comes to COLAs, but that's never been implemented. And matter of fact, that's one of the reasons the elected officials keep falling behind.
Commissioner Reedy, I'm not aware of that either. There might have been some discussions, and I'm not aware of that, actually adopting something along those lines.
It could have been, I remember we were having the discussion, and it might have, what we might have finally settled on was the repeal of the COLA being cut. And elected officials have to stand up and say, we think these salaries should be adjusted independently of an automatic. And that, again, that's why I asked, because I couldn't remember where we finally settled on the overall discussion. You know, I think this is a critical discussion always to have, it's important to have. I appreciated Commissioner Angel's efforts to move this into the future. There's accusations of vendetta, but from what I read, this is certainly tied to future elections and not reducing or hurting anybody currently in office. And so I would applaud him for that. It's something that would be solidified by an election. And so I certainly don't see any type of vendetta or ill form. I think this is a great discussion about the compensation of elected officials. And I think key to that is what can we do to ensure that we're attracting a good pool of candidates? And obviously, compensation is a part of that discussion. I really respect Ralph's efforts to try and make this data-driven and showcase where there are points, particularly like with the sheriff's office, where we're falling significantly behind. And I think that it's very, you know, reasonable to periodically make adjustments to those. And so I personally don't, and part of what I liked about this was the fact it's tied to the future. You know, a vendetta would be to dispass something today, cutting the salary. And that's not what this does. This ties it to the future in moving forward, from my reading and understanding of it, and binds it with future elections and people coming in. Obviously, there are some exceptions where there are some people in office where we could potentially make a decision to adjust their salary. But it would be, from my reading of it, it would be an increase for those who have fallen significantly behind.
So, I mean, option one takes the commission salary from 119,444, and next year takes it to 78,500. That's a reduction.
It's an option.
And number two takes it down to 99. And number three leaves it the same for one year. And then in 2022, it does a reduction, and in 2023, now 2022 is an election year, but Tanner and I will still be in office until 2023. And so there's a reduction in 2022.
And those are all options, and I think that the point here is to have discussion about it. And last I looked, checked, you know, you were wanting to cut taxes, significantly roll back a lot of the things that the county had. And I distinctly remember sitting through hours and hours of public comment, and one of the number-one comments was, why aren't you starting with your salary? And so if we're truly listening to the public, then I think Tanner's in tune there. He's saying, okay, if this is cut taxes, cut services, then we have to look at cutting salary as well of elected officials.
On all elected officials?
Sure, look at them all.
Look at them all?
And look at, and start with the commission, because we're the one that makes the financial decisions.
But you're willing to go up on the others?
I'm willing to have the conversation, is what I'm saying. I'm also saying that people who accuse of vendettas most often are the ones that have them. I found that in life. And so I think that there is also a distinction here in the speciality of certain particular positions. When we look at the sheriff or when we look at, like, the treasurer or the county surveyor, we're talking about very specialized individuals who have a very specific skill set that aren't, you're generally not going to find, you know, just more of a, for lack of a better term, a common citizen who's going to run for surveyor, right? It's going to be somebody who has that specific skill set. There are, beyond just the governmental entities, there are other areas to compare salaries. And so I think that that particular thing gets easier to establish what a good salary is because they're kind of career-oriented positions to some degree. Even though they are an elected official, there's a particular career skill set that's tied to that. Whereas when we look at more legislative bodies, even administrative bodies to some degrees, you can come from a large variety of backgrounds and adequately fill that role. And so I see those particular roles as much more acts of public service than career paths, right? This wasn't a career path for me, this was a term of public service. When I ran the first time, I said, you know, the most I'll do this is for two terms, if that's the case. Because I'm happy to go back to doing my chosen career path, which is working on the ranch. And so I think that when we're talking about public service and the compensation level there, it's very difficult to tie that broadly to the private sector because it's not a career path, nor should it be a career path, to be a policymaker.
Yeah, I agree with the career path. So in essence, you're saying you're overpaid for the last four years?
I'm certainly happy to have the conversation.
Well, Commissioner Lee, I just, one more question that I have on the, because I think that it's fair, and like I said, this was all, we did not have a chance to discuss a lot of this, and these were options. I'll, you know, the first couple of options, I think, are off the table for the point of, you know, the point you made, that, you know, people made a certain degree of effort to seek a position. They're serving the position, they're operating under the assumptions of that election. So if you push it out to, you know, a changeover in elections, I'm just curious of, because I hear you loud and clear on not messing with people's expectations, but the, how do you feel about whether this enhances the pool of candidates or whether that can just kind of reset how people view the commission, you know, looking to 2023 by doing some sort of adjustment?
Right, and I think that's an important part because in that analysis and under the context of what I was talking about with that, if we went to a three-quarter time, and of course, three-quarter time means what? Because when we say that this is full-time, what does that mean in the way of hours? Is that 40? Is that 60? Is that what? It is what you make of it.
Yep.
I can come in, I can be in the office every single day, and I can work on stuff over and over. Another commissioner cannot show up and then, you know, only be here sometime and others, and still the same thing applies. So when we're talking about what that means in the way of time, even three-quarter time can mean something, I mean, somebody three-quarter time can only come in maybe 20 hours a week where somebody else is coming in here, and they're in here for 30 or plus hours a week. The reason why I said that it could possibly enhance is because part of the problem with going into public service like this is that when you go into it, it does have an interruption, an interruption component to it. And that interruption component to it can be detrimental, and it can be detrimental as you're going forward, you know, in your ability to provide for your family and your career and in your job. And so if there's, if there's an ability for individuals, you know, who are not required to be here or under the scrutiny of being here full-time, and they're not, and they actually can hold another, have another job or have a business that they're working on and still be able to do a public service, you might get a different crop of candidates that come into play. And that's what I said all along, is that I know, there's plenty of individuals that said, well, I'd like to, I'd like to serve in the commission and maybe even run for that office, but I'm not going to interrupt what's going on or I'm not going to sell my business, you know, to go to that length. But at this point in juncture right now, this is a full-time position. And when I came into office, they asked me, are you looking at half-time, three-quarter time, or full-time? And I said, I'm, I committed to the constituents a full-time effort. And so I plan on being here in the office, I plan on doing the duties of the office in whatever traditional way that seems to be for me. And so that was, that was, that was the context, you know, out in the community in that conversation that we have. But to say that this is a full-time position, but yet we pay at a three-quarter time, you know, that's where it starts to get really off. And if we want...
I agree with everything you just said, right? And so that's my question, though, is like, for, I know you're talking about the five-person group. And so it's just, as we look forward, and I don't know if we intend to kind of keep looking, I mean, that was part of why I started this last few weeks, is do we, you know, are we going to start pushing toward that in the new administration? I mean, I know that you and Tom have supported it in the past. And, but even if not, is this a, like, again, off the table for interrupting anyone's term that they've won, that they've already begun serving, right? That continues under all the same assumptions that you're laying out. I'm just trying to figure out if, you know, that guy who you said who would maybe run for the, run, but doesn't want to sell his business, is that, is that the, should we think about adjusting the expectations, the compensation level for the next election cycle?
Yeah, and you know, and it could be, and I think that's a discussion for another day. Another part that's really hard is that this, I mean, the agenda item was put on, you know, 24 hours before. But like you even mentioned, this is a conversation that we've had the first time with the levels that are put on here in Exhibit A. I saw them, what, a couple hours ago is all? And so I don't even know how many people have looked at them or seen them. And I think this is a broader conversation than just, you know, end of the year, let's see what can be done, let's push something through. I think there's a bigger conversation that I think we should have, even with our HR director, when it comes down to this conversation.
Okay.
One additional thought, and I think that this is an interesting, and I think it's primarily somewhat philosophical. And that's this notion of hours worked for a salaried position. In my world, when somebody is paid a salary, they're getting paid to do a job, a task. And some people might be able to complete that task in a few hours, and some people might take 10 hours to complete the same task because of different styles, different capacities, different time-management skills. There's a whole host of things that could come into that. And so when I'm looking at a salaried position, I'm not looking at somebody who's punching their time clock to get paid 750 an hour or whatever it might be. I'm looking at somebody who has a competency level to complete a given task and a requirement of a position for this sum of money. And so I think that we, for me personally, I'm not so interested in, you know, did you put in 38.2 hours this week? I'm interested in, did you get your job done? What have you accomplished? When we pay people by the hour, I think you get a tendency for people to not do a whole lot because they want their hourly paycheck. And I'm interested in efficiency, productivity, and especially from a salaried position, in getting something accomplished more than I'm worried about, how many hours did you spend on this?
Okay, one thing we need...
I think that's part of, you know, when I, maybe that's a different philosophy than some. But I think for me, when I look at the compensation of a salaried position, that's something that I personally look at.
Thank you. Just for one sequencing thing, I know we still need to go into the public hearing, so we might as well get that done with. I don't know if there's much public... I, I don't know if there's much public comment, but I would entertain a motion, since we noticed this, to do that.
I think we, didn't we already...
No, we haven't. Motion to open the public, uh, public hearing number two for the discussion of the adoption of a resolution fixing the salaries of Utah County elected officials.
Second.
We have a motion in second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. We are in the public hearing. Same procedure as last time. You have a comment, you can come up to the podium if you're in the room or you can raise your hand on Zoom, if you're in Zoom.
Commissioners, our first comment on Zoom will come from Deana. Deana, we're going to unmute you. Please state your first and last name for the record when you comment.
Hi, my name's Deanna Holland. So I've been listening this entire time when you have been talking about this salary issue. And when I saw these on the agenda, this one and, and the next one, I kind of, I kind of feel like this is kind of a, a runaround. So Tanner, when you did the introduction to this, you started talking about three-quarter time positions. And I've been following this whole, do we need to change the commission? Do we need to increase the size? And I know that you and Nathan, Nathan, sorry, are very interested in increasing the size, that you were for Prop nine. And we overwhelmingly voted against Prop nine. We want our commission to stay the same. That's three full-time commissioners. And whereas I love the idea of having, you know, commissioners that, that save us money, right? That's, that's kind of ridiculous when we, when we look at the way this is being pushed. So in your introduction, you talked about the fact that this is more in line with a three-quarter time position. We don't have three-quarter time commissioners, we have three commissioners. So if you want to have the discussion of, there's not enough work for us to do to really earn the amount of money that we've been earning, then you should have told us beforehand and said, these are three-quarter time positions. We only need three commissioners at three-quarter time. But you guys haven't. You know, you've been earning a, a great salary, which is a, a good full-time salary, and I'm assuming you've been putting in the hours to, to earn that. And so to say now that we should reduce the wage to a three-quarter time just seems like a setup to me. Like, the next step is going to say, oh, well, we have three-quarter time pay, so now we're going to need more commissioners. You know, I'm not interested in changing the way the county commission is run. And Utah County said they are not interested in changing the way the commission is set up. So why are we doing this? It makes no sense to me to take three full-time commissioners and put them down to three-quarter time pay unless the next step two is to try to add more commissioners and to try to change the setup. And, you know, I, I don't understand why we're doing this in December. I don't know why we're doing this right before we get commission changes. And I don't know why this hasn't been more promoted, you know? I mean, this is a, a big deal if this is where it's going. And if it's not where it's going, then why the crap would we take three full-time positions and, and pay you three-quarter time pay? So, you know, I'm pretty upset that, that this looks like to me shenanigans to try to change. What Utah County says, we don't want to change.
Okay.
Thank you. Our, our next comment will come from Jonathan Bezzarano. I'm going to ask you to unmute now.
You hear me?
Got you.
All right, thanks so much. Um, just really quick, just wanted to say that the timing on this is off. There's no reason to change it. I feel like you, the comparison with Utah State Legislature is an incorrect one. I, I don't think of the legislature as something to copy. I like the commissioner, I like vigorous debate, I like people who putting their hearts and souls into this. And I voted against Prop nine. Um, yeah, and, and I think that the number one thing to recognize is that if we lower the pay, then it opens the door for revolving doors, special interest type people into a position. And I'm thoroughly opposed to that, and I've complained bitterly about the disclosure process and things like that in Utah Legislature. And I would, would, I'm vehemently opposed to lowering the salary of the county commission at this time. And I think that it should be done later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Our next comment comes from Aaron Bullen. We are asking you to unmute now.
Okay, well, thank you. Um, I've just been trying to digest this in the, the short time that we've kind of had to look at it as the public. You know, I'm not, um, a- opposed to the idea of, of discussing, uh, you know, possible, uh, salary changes or like a schedule of, of maybe a reduction of, I don't know what they were being called, the, the first step or the second step down, after people's elected terms. And I think, you know, that was mentioned a few times, you know, for, for Tanner and Bill, that would be, you know, 2023, um, you know, Tom's already been elected. And so like, I think it should depend on it. And, you know, maybe that's in, in 2025, you know, when, you know, that would be switched for whoever fills that seat after 2025. I think it's, you know, always appropriate for, for people, especially those who make the financial decisions, to think about maybe cutting their own pay. You mentioned, you know, the three-quarter time versus full-time work, and then there was some, you know, back and forth on whether or not you actually need to work in a certain number of hours to, to be full-time or to be three-quarter time. I, I can tell you, in, in most places, I would, I would think in the private sector, you know, there, there's a lot of full-time workers, you know, such as myself, that work far more than, you know, 40 hours a week. But, uh, you know, I, I'm expected to, you know, bare minimum, you know, be available and working for those, for those 40 hours. So full-time to me means at, at least 40 hours on, on the clock punched in. Yeah, uh, to, you know, at least, uh, earn your, earn your keep. And, uh, three-quarter time would mean at least, at least 30. So, you know, if, if it were to go to three-quarter time, if you think you could accomplish everything in 30 hours, um, on the clock, I think that's an appropriate discussion moving forward to be something to switch to for the individual commissioners after, after term expires. It's kind of like the idea, you know, that they talk about sometimes in Congress, term limits and how no one wants to, you know, uh, limit their term while they're still in office, but they've, they've suggested, okay, well, anyone who's not in office right now, that the term limit would apply to them. So I, I think, you know, that would be under the same principle, not, um, I guess, potentially, you know, uh, going against, you know, the contract between you and the voters and the decision that's already been made, um, but, uh, setting up for, for a future change. So, but, I mean, right now, I don't think it'd be appropriate to, to take a vote on that and, and make the change now. I think, you know, you could get plenty of buy-in talking about this in, in future meetings and, you know, in the next year. There's a lot of people who want to, um, create some more margin for not increasing taxes. And you could get a lot of public support on that in the future. That's it.
Thank you. As we're seeing, if there's any other public comment, I guess, I'll actually make a response. I actually thought there were some great points made, um, in a lot of those comments. And, and in that last one, um, you know, one thing that was brought up that I didn't, haven't really responded to yet, which is, my experience with a lot of these positions is that folks end up spending a lot more than three-quarter time or half or part-time. I mean, my goodness, we, we work with mayors in the county who, we have a few of our larger cities that have full-time mayors, and we have some mayors that are very part-time. I think it's 10 to $15,000 a year that they make. But oftentimes, uh, working essentially a, a full-time job in that capacity. And, uh, it's, that's probably not fair compensation at all for it, but it's amazing that despite it not being fair, people are willing to step up and, and serve in that capacity. But anyway, I appreciate, appreciate all those comments. Do we still have, I don't see hands in this Zoom room, but is there anything at the, in the commission chambers?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion.
Motion to end the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion in second to end the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, we have now closed the public hearing. So any suggestions on what we do with B1?
Well, I, I think if your intent is to have the conversation, which, from some of the comments, I think it was, I would think that a continuation would be probably in order so that the conversation can continue on and, and you guys have an opportunity to, to work with Ralph and look down through some of these pay scales and, and, and come up with something.
And, and I would be for that too. I don't mind having that, having that conversation. I'd just like to have that conversation on a long time, on a long-term, not in two hours before there's a possible vote. So I would, I would be in favor of a continuation, you know, for a discussion into the future on this as well. Because I think you have to remember that I was the one that proposed on the five-member commission going to that 71. That, that, that was, that was me that wrote that up. It wasn't me saying, that's forced on me to do so. That was, that was me sitting down there and figuring the numbers up with it on a three-quarter basis. So in essence, if I would have ran for office, if that would have, if that would have went, went through, there would have been a reduction there, you know, that would have happened naturally on that process for me.
Totally, Commissioner Lee. No, I mean, I, that's, that's the context I meant to, to present, and that's why, you know, I, I don't support, you know, cutting, you know, pulling the rug out from anyone. And that's why I indicated that, you know, I don't, I didn't understand the Vendetta piece because I was trying to give you credit, that that was, you know, something that you had gone out...
And I apologize if it come across that way. I mean, it, for me, it was, it was, you know, we got it, got it quick, two hours before a voting meeting, which throws high alerts and red flags in there. And we've already been through a very contentious election process, and it, and it had the tendencies to look like there's something going on, like the one caller said, some shenanigans with it. And I'll admit, you know, I get caught up in that too. I'm, I'm human with it, and I, I just was like, what in the world is going on here? So I, I apologize to you if, if it seems like that was, you know, if it come across that way. But, uh, it did throw a lot of red flags and, you know, motions automatically jump.
I think from my perspective, what's going on is we're having a, a presentation on salaries in the midst of budget season. And, and so for me, that's, when I saw this come on the agenda and, and the related documents and such, and, and listened to the comments, that's how I took it, was, look, we're in a budget season, uh, we're trying to do better long-term planning for the county moving forward. We've got, we had last week some discussions on potential staffing adjustments for, for the commission and others. And so I think it was just part of a, a context there of, you know, how do we move forward and what's the appropriate levels of compensation to do so?
Yeah, well, we had a, we did have a work session, agenda item on this, on this, where Ralph came to us. And, and I believe that we all, to a certain degree, expressed to Ralph, either in that meeting or privately, that this was something that, uh, you know, was for future conversation. At least that's how I took that work session item. And so, uh, you know, it coming, I think it should be a longer discussion, which a work session item is, is appropriate for, to have those kind of conversations.
Okay. Yeah, no, and I think to Commissioner Ivey's point too, I think some of these principles, as we move down through this agenda, will, will, uh, continue to, to come out a little bit, right? And I, I don't anticipate that we all have the exact same views on it, but I think we're in the budget season, but we're also kind of trying to sort through, there was an election on Prop nine. Is there common ground on certain principles that weren't wrapped up in Prop nine? Or is there disagreement on those principles? And now that we have resolution, that we're still in the commission forum, some of the pending decisions that we've been kind of waiting on, are we ready to move forward with those? So, um, that's some of the context I have for it. So I guess I would entertain a motion for continuing this item.
Want to tell the next meeting or should we do the December or the January 4th?
Well, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we, that we table this item without date so that it can be pulled back on either a work session or an agenda item into the future.
Okay, I'll second that. Can I suggest that you continue without date?
Continue is better, okay, continue without date.
Tabling usually means you're going to revisit it this meeting at some point.
Okay, continue without date for the opportunity to bring it forward.
Second.
We have a motion in second to continue without date. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That passes 3-0. Okay, now we move to public hearing number three. You know, commissioners, I don't know if this, uh, again, I, I think it maybe is helpful to give context to our attendees as we talk about what the public hearing is. So this was continued from last week, we did a little brief, a brief introduction. So that's being reopened now. And there's a budget proposal that's uploaded to the system. I've worked on this proposal. It actually ends up passing a budget that spends less absolute dollars or appropriates less absolute dollars in 2021 than we appropriated in 2020. Some of that is because of the way the administrative services account is being, a lot of that is being attributed. I would say there's just a couple of things that I'll, I'll point out is, at the start of the year, I set a goal, I know it's a goal that others on the commission and others in other departments shared, which was to pass a balanced budget in 2021 while lowering the certified tax rate. And this budget accomplishes that. Balance of the budget again while lowering the tax rate. And I think that's good news for everyone in Utah County. I also set a goal that says, continue to restrain spending to ensure deficits are eliminated and reserves and capital project funds are replenished in 2020. And we've also been able to accomplish that in 2020. And we, we received some help from the way the CARES Act came through from the federal government. And a lot of help. But that is, we're in a good spot with that item, and so I feel good about that. And so those are just a few of, of a couple introductions. You know, this, we did not feel like this was the year for many new requests on the heels of, of this pandemic. And so the vast majority of new requests are not included in the 2021 budget, which is why we're able to kind of keep the spending pretty flat. And so with that, I don't know if there's opening comments, obviously it'll come back to us. I don't know if the clerk auditor wants to make their reopening comments. And then, you know, after anyone chooses to, to discuss that, we can entertain a motion to enter the public hearing.
Yeah, this is Amelia Powers Gardner, Utah County Clerk Auditor. And you said most of what I wanted to say, Commissioner Ainge, and that is that this is a lower budget than our 2020 budget was. Our 2020 budget was about $104 million, and this one is about $100 million. So it's a reduction. A lot of that did come from the Administrative Services Fund. And the tentative budget that was adopted in October was 106.7 million. So this is about, just about one, 6.2 million, sorry, 6.2 million less than that. A, a large chunk of that was the Administrative Services Fund. And then other parts of that were just requests made from different divisions that were denied.
Great. Ready for a motion?
Yes.
Motion to open, uh, public hearing three for the discussion on the 2021 budget for the general fund and other budgetary funds of Utah County.
Second.
We have a motion in second to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are in the public hearing.
And there's, there's no one here, Tanner, so...
Aye.
Josh, you got anybody?
At this time...
At this time, there's no one with their hand raised in the Zoom room. And I've not received any messages in the Zoom chat.
Okay. We also didn't have, last week, we had a public hearing on this. So, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Ivy.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All in favor say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. Public hearing is now closed. We now move to regular agenda item number C1. I've made my introductory comments on this budget. I don't know if there's any discussion.
Yes, so I want to go down through just a little bit on the budget.
Yeah.
I see, I see the transfer, and I understand, and I actually applaud the movements so that we move over into Administrative Services. I think that's an important component that we've been trying to work on for years, and finally, it's getting there and getting done. That allows the county to appropriately charge administrative service fees to grants and others that are, has been, and are needed and necessary, excuse me. So I appreciate that, realizing then what we look at in the budget is that when we take that, those monies that were in our revenue, excuse me, I got a tickle in my throat, when we are necessarily in our revenue projections and transfer them over, it does, it does appear, thank you, thank you. I mean, it does, it does have the appearance of a reduction, which, you know, I see there. But for the most part, the large majority of that stuff has, is, has just been transferred over to our Administrative Service Account, which is now the 680, the 680 account, which I see. A couple of things.
I would agree.
And so when we look at the numbers on that, you know, it's, I just want to emphasize that it's not a strong reduction. The numbers look like a significant reduction, but it's just a transfer of numbers to a different account.
It's accounting for it in a more accurate way. Absolutely.
Yeah, right. And I get that. I see that. I'm not, I'm not quite sure on the reduction when it comes to the sales tax. When we had the, when we had the tentative budget presented to us, which was, I can't remember how many months ago it was.
About two months ago.
About two months ago. That, that projection was put forward, and as I understand, in working with the Clerk Auditor's Office, there's always kind of a form, there's always a look at what is going to happen. And it's been, you know, deemed as a potential softening that might happen. And I applaud the conservative thought into this, if we're looking at 2021 and saying that we're going to have a $1.5 million possible softening in that.
Yeah, from the projection. So it's flat year over year. So we're looking at the sales tax being the same for 2021 as it was for 2020. We had projected a little more of a strong economy, but in the last two months, the economists are, they are projecting a double-dip recession. And with a double-dip recession, I just didn't feel comfortable projecting an increase in revenue there. I would love to be wrong in this aspect. I would love for next year, our economy.
I hope you're wrong in this aspect.
Yeah, I would love for our economy to be stronger than that, for all of our sakes. Absolutely.
I just know at the beginning of this year, when we did the projections, and then the pandemic hit, and we were going into the worst-case scenarios and seeing counties around this country looking at 20% reductions, and then we were worried to death at what was going to happen in our county, and it didn't materialize.
Right.
And so.
I think having three Costco's in our county helped, and we will have four next year. So let's hope that that helped because, you know, they did sell out of toilet paper and water.
I thought it was because we had three full-time commissioners that were on the side of freedom.
Obviously.
But anyway.
Had nothing to do with the fantastic clerk auditor at all.
Yeah. So I'm not sure about that one. That'll be interesting to watch over this next year with the projections that come on with it. The other one that I want to point out is the transfer for the recorders, recorders fees of 1.395700, that, you know, 1 million over, you know, 300,000. That one's an interesting one to me, that that one's being, you know, transferred over to this 680 account.
I felt comfortable doing that along with the admin services, because in the past, the admin services were serving the ANC fund functions, like HR and audit. And those areas were getting served through, through the General Fund. And now that we've reallocated those costs for the Internal Service Fund, then those ANC monies don't necessarily belong in the General Fund, because that was kind of the justification before. So it's just really cleaning up our accounting and ensuring that those stay along those lines. I know that that balance, the ANC fund balance, would have actually gone down this year because of the adjustment with Administrative Service Funds, and moving those into that correct fund balanced that out.
Yeah, so I'm, and I hear that, and I know the thinking behind, you know, behind that. But there's, it's a, the ANC fund is a dual-edged sword in certain aspects. The monies that are generated for it are for the ANC, you know, holders in there. But also, if there's a shortage, which we've had in ANC funds in the past, the General Fund is the one that picks up the balance on that. And so when there's, when there's a surplus in ANC funds, it can be, I just said can be, it can be transferred over to the General Fund. And so I would just like a stronger look at that. Maybe the proposal would be that, you know, some capital improvement projects that happen in the ANC, you know, areas, we could put some money into that. But I do think that there should be some sort of balance that does transfer back over, because what I'm afraid of is the potential, which I don't know will happen, but it's always potentials with budgets, and that is that an ANC account starts to get, starts to run away from us.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. In fact, we, and Josh was just confirming this to me, as we move forward with things like the Capital Improvement Plan and the Equipment Replacement Fund, in the future, we are planning on drawing into those funds from ANC for those purposes. So what you pointed out is exactly on par with what we are planning moving forward, so that those CIP funds and those things will be, the fund into them, some of the draw will come from ANC for those ANC projects. Some will come from the General Fund for the General Fund projects. And if we happen to have a year that we have an excess in the ANC fund, we could discuss transferring that in the end of the year, budget transfer, like we're going to do in the last meeting for 2020. I think that's a more proper time to transfer that over, after we know if there is a surplus, rather than on the front end, assuming that there's going to be a surplus, especially now that we're starting to draw from that ANC fund for things like equipment and capital improvements and the Administrative Services Fund.
Right. And then, and then last of all, so I want to talk about those. I appreciate the work that's being done. I've had the opportunity to visit with Rudy, whoever Rudy, Rudy and Deneen, and then we had conversations in our, in my office. And I want to point this out for this budget process. And that is, is that when we project into the future, and that's what budgets are, it's kind of our educated best guess as to what's going to happen. And one of the, one of the, one of the hiccups that I have this year is what I feel like was a pretty strong mandate from the citizens of this county for a reduction in the tax rate. Now, I heard Tanner's, you know, saying that there is a reduction in the tax rate. To understand what that reduction in the tax rate is, is that we have increased, we're going to increase more. It's new growth. There's new, there's more people in the pool. And because we didn't go to truth and taxation, there's a natural, there's a natural adjustment that happens. That's, that's the tax rate that he's referring to there that has gone down. The one I'm referring to, though, is one in which the citizens, as I perceive it and see it in Utah County, are asking for a stronger tax rate reduction. And so it's really hard for me to start a budgeting process when I believe that next year is going to see a tax rate reduction materialize, whatever form that looks like. And I know we had conversations for projection, and I know your office is working, you know, even with our department heads, on different scenarios of what that might look like. And so it's going to be hard for me to vote for a budget that does not have that anticipation in it, because I believe it's a strong mandate from, from the people. And so, but I, again, I appreciate the work that's going on, and I think there's a lot that is happening in right ways, and we're putting things in areas that make sense for us in the future to capture. And I think we're headed in the right direction. I just, for me, I'm going to be voting no on this budget because of what I see as a strong mandate from the people to do something that's going to have to be adjusted.
Yeah, and I think that my office has worked tirelessly to take that effort from the people and work really hard to ensure that our property taxes are not subsidizing grant-funded programs, that the ANC is paying for that, and making sure that additional tax revenues are not, are not paying for those funds. So I definitely understand what you're saying, and we have worked tirelessly to do that in any way that we can. And that is through bringing a more true and accurate way to accounting, updating our systems and our processes that haven't been updated in a decade, and ensuring that the true cost of government reflects the correct revenue stream, which I know that that can be kind of confusing, because people, they see that their property taxes, well, we, you know, we collect about $100 million, give or take, in that fund, but we process almost $500 million total throughout the county. And those come from different revenues. They go out to different sources. Some of them come in through grants, some of them come in through different things. And so we've worked really hard to ensure that we have a true and accurate accounting, so we can have efficient government, so that we can have very proactive government, rather than a reactive government, and to ensure that the proper cost of different programs is being allocated to the funds where it belongs, and isn't just being thrown onto the General Fund and the property tax system.
And I also want to applaud, because this next year, we're going to have a dashboard, knock on wood, that will be able to tell the story that I think you're talking about there, and it can, and it'll be a real time. And if that's, if that's the case, it gives, because nothing's worse than what's not seen or known. And so the public will be able to get in there, too, and to see, see what's, what's happening on a real-time basis with the dashboards. Of course, the commissioners will be able to do the same thing. And that way, stories can be told in the sense of actual data and numbers that can be seen. And I think that if we go down a path like that, that it's, it's a path that I like because it brings the public along with us. And then there's not this explanation part of, well, let's just go as far as we can go, and then we'll just hope that eventually it will catch up. And I think that the public would appreciate that as well as myself as we look at those.
Yeah, and implementing those programs, they're, not only are they incredibly useful for the commissioners, for yourselves, and for the public, but they enable our department heads to have a better view of how they're spending and where they're spending. And I'm a huge advocate of infusing innovation and efficiency into government. That's how we'll be able to continue to serve the citizens of our county as we grow at an exponential rate.
I did have a couple of questions in looking through this finalized budget on line items. I did notice that there was the mileage reimbursement reintroduced for the commission, which had been cut out of last year's budget as part of our cuts. And I was curious as to why that was reintroduced, and if the commission would be willing to entertain once again cutting that. And then there is also, I believe, 6,000, 9,000? 6,000 set out for travel. And I was curious if that's in anticipation of conventions rehappening, or where that was at, or if there would be a willingness to look at reducing that again. And again, you know, we also cut from the commission last year books and subscriptions, office supplies, equipment supplies, food and meals. Those were all added back in, and I was just curious as to why.
Yeah, those were added back in, just you explained it there when you asked if that's about anticipation for travel. The anticipation for travel is to return in 2021. A lot of the committee assignments that commissioners have, and a lot of the different things were done via Zoom. And the anticipation is based off of the, basically the base of the 2019, because 2020 was such a unique crazy year. We based those off of the 2019, and that was the assumption. But obviously, that is completely up to the commission. You get to decide if you want to cut any of those things or leave them in the budget.
I mean, for me, I think those are, those are areas of easy savings. In part, that's historically in four years, I've seen a lot of that get turned over and just transferred around at the end of the year. So. But that would be one of the areas that I could see cuts, because I'm looking through, trying to find spots.
Yeah, and you guys absolutely, if you want to, with a vote, you can cut those.
And I'm just throwing those out there as ideas, because they don't affect me one way or the other. But those were some areas that I saw historically we had reduced, and there would be potential for future savings.
One of the interesting things that I just need to have answered, I guess, real time, is that this budget format that we're voting on, obviously, just kind of, it doesn't go into the same detailed line items, Commissioner Ivy, that you're referring to. And so we've all, I think, seen some of the underlying detail. So for example, I think that the proposal would be to reduce just the overall commission account by that dollar amount that may have been implied from the 2019 actuals for mileage.
Right. And so that, those numbers come from the financial system showing the proposal of line items is where I got those specific numbers from. And so I concur with you that in overall presentation here, you could just show, you know, an overall reduction.
And I don't have that more detailed, granular one in front of me. Do we know what the dollar amount is for mileage from the 2019 actual?
It's usually $5,000 per commissioner. I think that's what was budgeted.
2,500, right? For mileage reimbursement or travel? Because travel's typically 9,000, and mileage reimbursement is 2,500 historically?
I don't remember. I really don't keep track of that.
And we would have gone with the 2019 historicals on those.
And so if you reduced each commission by 8,500, you'd get to a total reduction of 2,505. And that still leaves like 500 for mileage reimbursement and 3,000 for travel.
Okay.
And like I said, I don't, obviously, you two and Commissioner Alex Sakovic are the ones that this most directly affects. This was just a particular area where I'd seen some savings that we'd had historically and thought we could carry forward.
I don't know what next year brings. I just don't know on, you know, if, usually, we're members of NACO, so we usually have conferences there. In the past, we've gone to UAC, which we're not members of. And so I just, I don't know what 2021 brings, you know, for us. I have no idea.
So it looks like historically, pardon me, Commissioner Lee, it looks like historically it's been $4,000 in mileage per commissioner per year. And we actually reduced that to 2,500 for 2021. So it is already down about 1,500 per commissioner, so about 4,500 in savings there. And then in the past, it's been 9,000 for travel and training, and that was reduced to, I think, about, was it eight or seven? Eight. Eight. So there was, there were some nominal reductions, but there could potentially be more.
And obviously, you know, a lot more business is being conducted over Zoom, so the travel really reduces on the mileage part. And who knows about conferences, how they're going to resume, you know, into the future. There may not be any.
So we did a small reduction for that. Exactly. We did a small reduction for that, but not a lot. But there definitely could be more, especially if things continue to go over Zoom.
But this conversation is interesting, because when we did that reduction, we also put it out to the departments to do the same and follow that, follow that model down. And I don't know to follow it all the way through if that's been translated as well, you know, in the way of, I don't, I mean, this last year, the commission was the only one that I know of particularly that did that, that kind of.
Well, I know in my department, for example, we did not, we had, we had a lot of travel and training planned because of the presidential election. We had a lot of training planned for our people. And the vast majority of that did not happen. I know, we had seven conferences between March and September canceled.
So, I mean, I would be happy, as we entertain motions on a final budget proposal, to consider a. to consider a nine thousand dollar reduction from the commission account, which would be three thousand from each commissioner's budget from travel or mileage. That's one thing, I, I appreciate that suggestion, one thing I would entertain. I don't know if we have, you know, what other comments of the budget, you know, Commissioner Lee, you've mentioned that you may not vote for it, and that you want a property tax reduction, or do you have a proposal on how you want to reduce taxes, or what corresponding budget cuts need?
Yeah, well, I've worked, I've worked with the, the Clerk Auditor's Office, and, and I've, I've asked them to, to go down through that and just to be open with it. I asked them to look at the potential of a three million dollar reduction, a six million dollar reduction, or a nine million dollar reduction. I talked with Rudy the other day, you know, there's only a certain amount of bandwidth, you know, especially going through the, and I, and I totally get it, and I understand. I, I was trying to crack the whip a little bit on him, and he said, I just don't have enough time in the day, so I get that. But he is gonna go down, he said he will go through, down through those analysis's. I don't feel like it's fair for, for me to sit there and say, well, I mean, the hard way of doing is to just say, if it's a nine million dollar reduction, that's eight point four, that's an eight point four percent, you know, flat across the board, reduction from, you know, every department. I think that that, that puts things on a, on a kind of a, an interesting platform, which is hard to do. And so I asked Rudy, and he said he's kinda started the process already, talking with department heads with those different scenarios, and just getting an idea of where that would come from and how that would work. And, and that's, that's all we're at right now, is just at that, at that juncture right now. I know that's his next, probably after this meeting, that's his, that's his next item, so.
Well, adjusting the 2020 budget is his next item.
Yeah, that's true, okay. So there's, there's still a 2020 budget.
So you don't have any particular cuts from this year's budget that you'd like to make?
Well, again, it's really hard to go down through. I know we got that ranking process, you know, put in place, but it's hard to start on a budgeting process in which I, I, I feel like there is going to be some sort of reduction into the future, and if there's a reduction into the future and we don't start here, how can I go through a, a process like that and, and come to a conclusion? It's, it's hard to do. It'd be hard to get to that point.
I guess for me, just to look at departments, you fill there's excess.
Well, I know, but I think that conversation needs to be had with the departments.
Kind of what I did with the commission, and, you know, I, I actually had talked to David Levitt earlier about his attorneys and the capacity of the attorneys, and when I found out they weren't all hired, we kind of terminated that conversation, because those positions had all been filled, but, you know, we'd talked about potentially a reduction there, you know, and, and so I guess that was my, so you don't have anything in particular, then?
Well, like I said, until I go through, until, I, I would rather have that conversation with, you know, Rudy's gonna have that conversation with department heads, and, and we had a preliminary conversation yesterday on, you know, there's, there's some easier things that can easily be done, and I'm not gonna say anything, Rudy, but on, on some of that, that conversation, but there's some easier things, and then there are some that are, might be difficult, and, and that's, that, unless we start there, it's pretty hard to have a conversation on. I, I wanna, I would like to do it with, with departments as, as we finish out the year.
So this bill is where it gets really frustrating for me, because for the last year, you've accused me of not being a full-time commissioner, and I've had those conversations with department heads, and I've proposed budget cuts at our budget meetings for the last two years. And that's just really hard for me.
That, that's great. I mean, everyone has different processes, like you do. I mean, last year, I proposed, I actually had a budget that I was, I was proposing, you didn't. And so obviously, there's, there's.
I, I had the budget that was on the agenda, and I brought additional cuts to it.
No.
And, and so that's where it's really frustrating for me.
Again, I'm, I'm going, I'm going back and listening, you know, elections have consequences, elections give direction, and elections is something that I'm listening to, and that's, that's something that I heard resounding over this last year from the citizens.
Commissioner Lee, it is, it is hard, though, right? Because it would be a different conversation if you were proposing them now. This is our budget process. This was our public budget hearing. And so if that mandate really rings in your ears and, and gets you going, you would think that you would propose it. And, and it also feels a bit backwards to me to begin with the cut without the correspond, in the, in the tax, without the corresponding cut in the budget. And I've always been willing to entertain those things in, in combination, but even tonight, what we're hearing is that you want to reduce, reduce the property tax, which is great, that's one side of the equation, and you feel like there's a mandate from the people. But that mandate has to come with the other, other side of that equation.
And, and that's, you know, you can, you can say that all you want, but did you, did you know, how long have you known that this has been something that I've, I've been looking at? Is this brand new to you?
There have been rumors that, that you may want to cut the budget, but we've never had a conversation about it. I was curious, are you gonna propose a budget? You know, I felt like this is the important time. I didn't really understand not participating in the budget process, just to wait until...
No, I participated in the budget process, obviously, from, you know, looking down through and having those conversations. The, the difference is, is that when the, when the rankings came out for what was, what was the yeses or nos on, on, on that, I, I expressed that to Rudy, which I know Rudy has, has talked with the, the two of you on this as well, and that was, it's really hard to go through a yes and no on, on if we, if we should accept this, this increase or not, when we're starting with a certain dollar amount and a dollar figure that I think is off, and it's not gonna, it's not gonna translate into next year. And so I've, I've left that door open for that conversation, but no one has stepped through the door and said, you know what? Why don't we project what that looks like into the future? What if? No one, no one has stepped through there and said, okay, you know, the possibilities are that there might be a reduction. I don't even know what that is. I don't, I don't know what, I know that Tom ran, and, and he, he said a whole bunch of things along the, the campaign trail on what that reduction might look like, but I don't know. I don't know what he's proposing, and I have said over and over that I'll be looking for a tax rate reduction, what that will be. I'm not looking to hurt the county. I had that conversation with Rudy. I want to find a way that, that it's, that it's advantageous, but I'm also looking a way to follow the mandate that the people have, have put forward through the election process. And so to say, well, this, just go in and start doing the cuts based off of my projection, you know, into the future, I would like to have some sort of understanding from the commission now, or the commission into the future, on what, where, where we're starting. Because if, where you start, at least then you can have that conversation. If you don't start in, in a place of at least understanding, then the, the conversations are meaningless.
Okay, I mean, I, I just, for me, just, I'll tell you, the, the way that I approach these type of proposals is, is that if, if I'm going to sponsor an initiative or a cause, I feel like it's, it's, the burden's on me to then do the underlying due diligence and the underlying work, and, and try to go and, and get support. And so, you know, I remember, we had a similar conversation right after the primary election, and that's when we set the rate, and that was a, that was a time where we had a similar conversation, where we came into that meeting, and I, I was willing to entertain something specific, but you didn't want to set the rate where it was, but you didn't have any plan, you didn't have a budget, you didn't have proposed cuts. So we moved forward. And then this one is a similar one, where, okay, now I've worked hard to propose a budget, we could vote on this, you say you're gonna vote no, but we also don't even have an opportunity to entertain what type of cuts or what type of proposal you might have in mind, because you haven't given us any of the detail.
Right, well, we have to, you know, I, again, I put forth the, the what-if scenarios to our budget manager, which is gonna take that to the department heads, and, and again, with the understanding and knowing kind of where the two commissioners now are when it comes to the budget process, and where the, the budgets are at, it becomes a lot, a lower priority for discussion. And with it being a lower priority for discussion, it's, it's hard to say that we should have that discussion now. I mean, if, if one of you two would've came up and said, hmm, the elections meant something, there was, there was a tone there that, that came back, and I think we need to analyze that, and, and let's work with the Clerk Auditor's Office and go through some what-if scenarios for the budget for 2021, that would've bumped up the conversations to a whole different level, but there was no conversation like that that came forward. And so what happens with the bandwidth that the Clerk Auditor's Office has, is they have to work within the parameters that, that are, that are giving to them by at least two of the county commissioners to, to work forward, even if the third is speaking differently and saying, let's have a different conversation. If that's not at least, at, at, listened to by another commissioner, then it doesn't, it doesn't materialize.
Got it, okay. Well, I'll just let the record state that I, I asked for that detail, and I was willing to entertain it in July, and I'm asking for it in this meeting, and was willing to entertain it in this meeting, if there were such a proposal.
Okay, are we ready for motion?
Yes.
I will move that we approve regular agenda, regular agenda C, number one, with the noted change of nine thousand total to the commission budget in the previous discussion.
I'll second for the vote.
We have a motion and a second for regular agenda item number C1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
That passes two-one. Okay, now we go to a staffing, a couple of staffing plan discussions. These were, this was continued from last week. We had this conversation about, you know, potentially adding a Director of Administrative Services and Public Affairs, or Chief Administrative Officer. I've had a chance to visit with others, even in that meeting, we kinda talked, you know, one change, you know, that I think is already happening, that I want to take off the table, is changing this title from Chief Administrative Officer, which you'll notice in, in item number two, to instead the Director of Administrative Services and Public Affairs, which is referenced in item number three. I think that this is a really important role for, for all the reasons that we talked about last week, and I, I don't know how much we want to get into them. The other question was, does this person work as a member of, do we kind of centralize the policy advisors that are currently dedicated to each commissioner to work with this administrative staff? Or do we keep the policy advisors and instead just have one person that works with this Director of Administration? And so I'm open to, to thoughts of what we want to do. I, I do support this role. These, we've now, in the budget, have created the, the Department of Administrative Services, and that has a ton of coordination as it relates to purchasing, as it relates with all of the various departments in the county, and that can be a glue for, for many of the commission administrative tasks that need to get done. There's also some functions that technically lie underneath the department, or the commission department, or the non-departmental department, like economic development, that this could just be an insourcing of some of those responsibilities, that we have someone who's really connected to all of this. So happy to hear your thoughts and have a continued discussion on this topic.
Were we looking to strike agenda item number two, then?
Well, I was looking for Tom. I was hoping.
Well, he sent a letter, he sent an email.
That he would be here.
No, he said he wasn't gonna be here, and he sent an email.
That's disappointing, because he hasn't been here for the budgets either. And, and that's concerning to me as a future only citizen. I, I, Tanner, can you maybe explain a little bit the changes, as, as I see them, the changes from last week to this week in the administrative position as a reduction in administrative role? Would that be a fair assessment? And that was one of my concerns with it last time.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll, I'll lay out every change in the two agenda items that I'm, that I can recall here. So the first is the title, the second is the pay grade, a little bit lower, the third is, I, I actually got some feedback in my conversation with Commissioner Lee, where, you know, we had this one conversation that was kind of like about how important it is for the elected officials to be the direct contact with the, with the constituents, and to not have any other kind of layer in between. And I agree with that notion, and I was actually kind of like, how did this, I never attributed that with this role, and I went back and looked at the job description, and there was this resident engagement and feedback function of the job description. And I, so in that part, I, I clarified that that's for specific tasks, and like managing a survey function, so that if we need someone to go out and do a survey of residents, that that's what that type of person, you know, would do. Another change is, we've made sure in the job description that it's a little bit more clear, areas where, you know, they're doing things on behalf of the commission. We, we cannot delegate authority that by, by state law is, is in the county commission's hands. And then the last thing is that in the, in last week's structure, and, and we could plug and play with some of this, if people want to have conversations, but last week's structure, it removed the policy advisors, and it added two deputy county administrators. In this one, it does not remove the policy advisors, and instead it just adds one administrative services coordinator that reports.
So all three of us, there was a request last week to get Tom's feedback on this, and all three of us did receive an email from him. After we read, after you read down through it, his suggestion was, is that we should hold off on, on this until next year for a discussion, which I think is, is, is appropriate considering the, the circumstances. I, I will, I will mention this, you know, Tanner, you and I did have that conversation. This, this new appointed Director of Administration Services and Public Affairs position is, is one that I am, I'm, I'm not supportive of. The second one, when you're looking at a full-time career service, administrative service coordinator position, is one that I'd be willing to entertain, you know, for the, the coordinated efforts that we have with, between the commissioners. I mean, our, our, our senior policy advisors do that now, they coordinate back and forth, they, they divide up from, not necessarily along the lines of portfolio, but even, but mostly along the lines of portfolio to take care of some of those, but there are some outside contracts that need to be taken care of, and I can, I can see if we're, if we're talking about a workload capacity in, in, in freeing up some, some there. I could see that being a discussion, you know, possibly for next year. I would think, though, that that, that, that career service administrator would be one that all three of the commissioners would have input into initially, as it is career service, so that they would have input into who that, who that individual is, at least, at least to start, to start off, and then continuity between commissioners coming and going over the years could be had, at least on a basis of, of a, a certain amount of understanding of how the commission works. And so, again, but I, I, overall, I'd like to see us hold off on this until next year for a discussion, as, as it does, it does affect, affect all three of us differently. Obviously, it affects you and I, Tanner, differently than it, it affects Nathan, because he won't be here next year, but, and it does affect Tom as he's coming in.
I'll move to continue items numbers two and three to the first regularly scheduled meeting of January.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to continue items two and three to the first meeting in January. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Aye. That passes two-one. I guess item number four doesn't really, well, I would entertain a motion to continue that. I don't remember, I, I'll make a comment here. I, I'm a strong advocate for this position. I think that we need it. I think we need capable individuals, I, I, you know, I... I, you know, I was willing to pass that tonight, make it subject to Mr. Sakovic's ratification or the commission's ratification in January. We'll continue that conversation. You know, if we were to have created that position, Josh Daniels is here on this to be appointed. You know, Josh has worked in the Clerk Auditor's Office, has been a major part of the transformation that's taken place there, and in that capacity, has worked with every department in the county, has worked closely with the commission, and I think would do an excellent job in this role. But as of this moment, this role doesn't exist, so I'd entertain a continuation there.
I'd move to continue Regular Agenda Item Number Four to the first regularly scheduled meeting of January 2021.
And I'll, I'll second that with a notation, and this is, I think with this being placed on there is a little unfair for Josh. I admire Josh tremendously. The problem is, is that usually if, if this, even if this, this position was to materialize, it should materialize with all three commissioners' input into the position, and this one, this one comes with what appears to be just one input, which I think is kind of out of balance, you know, looking at, looking at positions.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. I would also like it noted on the record, I strongly support these positions, and the only reason I moved for continuance is out of kindness and consideration to Commissioner-Elect Sakovic's opportunity to participate, given his apparent inability to show up to this meeting.
Okay. I guess we move to Regular Agenda Item Number Five for action.
This was a NRFP to purchase a short takeoff and landing aircraft for the Sheriff's Office. The committee met and made the recommendation, well, the top three recommendations in order of preference was Sun Country Cubs, Aviat Husky, and Aerodigital.
I know there was differences in amounts, but I believe in looking down through that, and I don't, sorry, I don't have it pulled up, but I believe Sun Country Cubs met all the criteria, and they were also the lowest on the proposal, if I remember correctly on it.
I'm seeing shaking heads from Robert and the sheriff.
I don't, I, I would be in favor of, well, unless there's more discussion, I'll wait.
I'm good.
Good. I would, I would propose that we have received the recommendation and proposal for the RFP, as stated, in Number Five on Regular Agenda Continued C, and the selection would be with Sun Country Club.
Second.
Sun Country Cubs.
Oh, Cubs. Okay. Cubs. Kind of like the plane, huh? Okay.
We have a motion and a second on Number Five. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. We move to Item Number 11.
So this is our annual agreement with Utah County Public Defenders Association. This has been an area of conversation that we've had. I feel like that we have made gains in beefing up the Public Defender's Association's opportunity to fulfill their constitutional obligations in a manner close to, but not quite caught up with the prosecutorial adjustments that this commission approved a couple of years ago. And so I actually just wanted to make that comment and appreciate the public defenders for their hard work on it, for their new position, which is doing a great job cleaning up their financial statements, and thank them for their diligence and hard work. And I like, I'm very comfortable with where the contract's at myself.
And Commissioner Ivy, I know that you and your office have worked a lot on this agreement, and so I appreciate that it was finally, you know, is ready for the same time that we passed the budget, because we had had some previous conversations. I know that some people get confused about that two-step process, that the budget allocates some funds within inter-agency and, and non-department, and then separately, we need to have a contract that actually sets the amount. So this would do that here.
Seeing no further, are you okay with the motion?
Yep.
I'll move to approve Regular Agenda Item Number 11.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Regular Agenda Item Number 11. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. That passes 3-0. Item Number 14 was held. I'm happy to give an overview. This one kind of came together pretty fast. So Commissioner Lee, I don't know if that would be helpful, if I just kind of gave an overview of this, or if you had specific questions you wanted.
Well, I don't have specific questions. This, this just kind of came on, again, came on the agenda last minute. I, I would, I would prefer that we continue this so that I could get a more in-depth understanding of it, my brief reading of it, and what this actually means. And it is a grant that is going from the county to UBU, and I just don't, I don't know the purpose. I was trying to read down through, you know, the UBU Smart Justice Initiative. I like the concepts of what's going on there, but I, but I'm not, I just don't know anything about it. So I'm just asking that we continue this so that I can have an opportunity to read it and understand what it is. There is a few things that I did notice right off, and that is, is that in our agenda, it does say that there's $30,000 to transfer, but then in the contract itself, it says $50,000. And so I don't know where this monies are coming from. I noticed that the $30,000, when I traced that back, seemed to be coming from wage, a lot, well, a portion of it, from wages and benefits that in your office that you didn't use, as you, as I'm assuming that, that for the military that you went into. But I don't know where the rest is coming from, so there's a lot of unknowns for me in what this, this actually is.
Sure. Well, let me address, let me address some of it tonight, in that this is a grant agreement with Utah Valley University that really helps develop, it's called the Smart Justice Initiative that would be housed at Utah Valley University, and they would be conducting a study on recidivism and other issues affecting our criminal justice system, addiction, the successes of some of our supplemental or alternative programming to traditional incarceration, how charges are running through our system and the cost of that. You know, 75% of our, of our budget as a county relates to criminal justice program, as we all know, between the Sheriff's Department and the County Attorney's Office and Public Defenders and WASH behavioral health. And so it's where a lot of the dollars are, and we all know someone who, whether through addiction or through choices in their life, have become a part of that system. And so I think both on the cost studies and on what the best human outcomes, this is a huge thing for us to study. And one of the things that has been incredibly frustrating for me, and that I am committed to doing everything I can to help address it, is that we struggle to even measure these programs sometimes. Anecdotally, I think those running the programs are incredible, and they know what's working and what's not, but at the budgetary level that we're operating at, we don't get the data of why this program's working, or if this program's working, what the recidivism rate is. And so this is all about, and one of the other challenges is that, you know, our elected sheriff, our elected county attorney, our outside contracted public defenders, the state-run court system, have different systems that don't always speak to each other very well. And so the point is, by using Utah Valley University, they can really focus on how to measure and how to study this and be an objective third party, and it's a win-win because their data and analytics can help inform our policy, but their data analytics can also help their publishing and their research. And so at the end of the year, you're right, you know, I noticed that there was some funds in, in my section of the commission budget at year-end, and I just said, you know what? This is such an interesting opportunity, and I spoke with stakeholders at UBU, and they were willing to do this, that I think this is some of the best spent dollars that we could ever come up with. And one other interesting element is that COVID-19 has had, created some interesting case studies where, because of courts being shut down, because of our jail population being concerned about COVID-19, more people have been released awaiting trial. And so there's an interesting opportunity to understand what that means, and if any policies should be adjusted moving forward. So I felt like this was timely. There were funds left year-end here that I don't know if we'll get again, but I believe in this mission. I believe in this area. It's an area where I hope to spend a lot of my personal time next year, is in the Criminal Justice Reform Initiative. And so I moved to do this, and, so I don't know if you have other questions. I, you know, we're always-
I think all those are, you know, I think they're, they're worthy, and, and I, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, the things you're talking about, I think, need to be studied. I'm, I'm just not used to this process. I'm used to, you know, as the grand tour, instead of the grantee, there's, there's usually some sort of, you know, really detailed written, you know, from, from, especially from a university, on what this looks like. I've read down, read down through it. The only thing I'm asking for is that we continue this till our December 30th meeting, just, just so that I can get familiar with what's going on, and maybe clean up a few of the discrepancies on, on the money side, you know, if it's $50,000, if it's $30,000, you know, how that works, and so that I can feel comfortable with it. Otherwise, I'm looking at it with a, with a big, I don't even know what this is, except for just some written and some explanation with it. I would just like to have the opportunity to look at it.
That's fair. I, Tanner, I applaud you on this. Obviously, I applaud you for finding the money that you had turned down from your salary when you were in training to fund this. That's my understanding of where you would have found the extra savings. And I know some other, from my office, we have some savings because my administrative assistant is single without a family, so I know we have some savings, some real savings there because of, of his particular benefit compensation. And I'd be happy to, you know, put those towards that, because I think this is a very noble cause. My understanding is that the sheriff and the county attorney both really look forward to having this kind of information as they look at ways to better manage their office. And I think it's part of a great, great conversation that we have to have in this county about continuing to reform our criminal justice system. Something I believe in and support very strongly. One of my greatest regrets is that we didn't get a domestic violence court through in my time in office, and I think this is, is something that fits in with that, that is desperately needed. And so I, but I respect Commissioner Lee's desire to look into it, and obviously, I think, you know, the 30th is appropriate, so we can do it when the budgetary funds are available, if that's the will of the commission.
And that's my, that's my only comment. Obviously, we always, I mean, I've always kind of honored this in continuance for time, and I'm happy to this time. I just want to make a caveat that the whole point is to get this funded before the end of the year.
Right.
And so-
And I see that happening. I'm, if we can-
Like, maybe, maybe we just have to figure out some of those details as well, so that we don't get tripped up with them receiving it on their end. Right? We'll have to just make sure that those, those two votes are, and the funding happen right away, so that this happens in the 2020 year.
Yeah. Yeah, that'll, that'll be important for accounting purposes. I'll make a motion that we continue Agenda Item Number 14 till December 30th, 30th of this year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to continue Item Number 14 till our next meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 That passes 3-0. Okay. Item Number 15. This would be maybe a little different conversation, but I still think it's, I still think this is actually really important. It would be slightly different if we had a chief administrative, or a Director of Administrative Services and Administrative Services Coordinator coming in. But I'll give a little bit of context of what's going on with this, this item Number 15 is, we, what was it? It was our last budget cycle. It's crazy, I think that was only a year ago, as we were going through this with, the county attorneys were going out of their space, and there was all this talk that the county needed additional office space to build a building, and we were just trying to scramble. We were behind. We didn't have any money set aside for a new building. And so, and the attorneys were talking about leasing space on a third-party site, and we, as the commission, decided that we would vacate the traditional commission offices and hand that over to the attorney's office, and that we would come over here to the historic courthouse. Also in that process, we had a couple of our outside entities that were not direct county employees leasing space here, and we've tried to go through the process of having them find third-party leases elsewhere, so that this historic courthouse that I'm sitting in and the administrative building are the main footprint of where county employees are, well, in the Sheriff's Department, but here on the Provo campus. And so that has gone pretty well, actually. We've been able to free up a lot of space here in the historic courthouse, so we have a little bit of room to grow. The challenge is, we have space that is not configured in a way that makes sense, in my opinion. For example, we have two enormous palatial offices. We have, and then we have a big, huge, just kind of room in between that's not set up for offices, it's not set up for reception area, it's not really set up for a conference room even, and that's on the main level and one, one level above. That same exact footprint in the courthouse on the other side of the building has been reconfigured, and it's great. It works as modern office space. It has a reception area, it has smaller, but still good-sized offices, so you trade that space, and it's very, very functional, and it gives us room to grow as a county. You know, I think that as we came over here, we were all willing to just kind of stay put for, for a while, was my sense of all of the commissioners, and we even held off on some of the renovations of turning it into a nice conference room, or how we were going to do it because of Prop 9. We didn't know, do we need to set up for council members and the mayor, or do we need to set up for commission? Well, with that over, I think it's time that we take action and actually make this space usable. And so basically, how I described is, is what I think, you know, we need to move forward with, is, and I don't have the details of that. I don't want to get too in the weeds, but essentially, to make these on the south end of the historic courthouse, on, on the main floor and the floor above that.
You mean the north end, right?
North end.
Sorry. Right. You're right, on the north end.
Okay.
That we look at RFPs to modernize and make that space more functional, with additional offices, conference rooms, you know, whatever kind of we think as we, as they go through this, this RFP and design process.
And I agree. I think that that conversation needs to be had, and I, I think that the direction to Public Works, you know, to at least start and engage in that conversation is appropriate. And I think that, that even Commissioner-Elect Sakovic needs to be involved in that conversation, which I know you have given him some plans as well, you know, to that, to kind of have that conversation of what it looks like, and potentially looks like. To be, because what it says is, "Direct Public Works to Begin," you know, and I think that's, I think that's your intent, is to begin. Right?
It wouldn't even come until Tom's in office, so I think he would be fully included.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a begin, and so I, I'm fully supportive of having, you know, those conversations with, with the three of us and with Public Works going forward.
Yep.
So I'll make a motion that we direct Public Works to begin the process of looking at the historical courthouse renovations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes 3-0. Okay. Somehow with all of these items, I have misplaced what we need.
I was told we need all of them.
This is Robert, Utah County Attorney's Office. We do need all four of the closed sessions. We do need all four of the closed sessions.
I'll move that we approve and set the date, time, and locations for the closed meetings as described in regular agenda items numbers 16, 17, 18, and 19 for today's date immediately following the conclusion of regular business.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for these closed meetings. All in favor say aye.
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 That passes three zero. We have no work session. Last thing is, do we have general public comment?
Seeing none in the room.
Okay, I'm just looking to see if anyone will raise their hand on Zoom. I'd like to give them a little bit more time. I don't see any on Zoom either.
We got one right at the last second. Two.
Oh, you got two, okay.
Okay. We'll go ahead and invite Chris Bramwell to unmute himself and begin his comment.
Let me turn on my video as well. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
All right, perfect. What, what's the time limit on public, public comment, by the way? I just have something short. Is there a limit?
Not particularly.
Okay.
Two minutes is great.
Just wanted to make sure. This is, this is my first time attending. So I've, I sent a couple of emails, I think to two of the county commissioners, but I recognize you're, you're, you're very busy. So I was hoping to just make a comment here today to let you know something I'm working on related to the county. And then I hope to just use comment, public comment periods to, I guess, keep you abreast of something I think is, is an important update that I think needs to be made to zoning, county zoning ordinance. I'm the owner of a couple lots in addition to some family members who have lots we've owned for, it would be 80 to 90 years now, that were the subject of an illegal subdivision back in the 1930s and 40s. Now, the, the lots were purchased in good faith. However, the company didn't record a subdivision plat map in 1942. Now, these lots, because it wasn't, a plat map wasn't submitted, and these lots were sold before Utah County code was adopted for zoning ordinances in 1942, most of the lots have been considered illegal subdivisions. So I've been working with the, the zoning office. We have a appeal to the, to the Board of Adjustment for the designation of one of the lots. However, the, the property rights ombudsman issued a opinion in the last few years. So based off of that opinion, I'm going to make a, submit an application to make a change to the Utah County zoning ordinance. So I'd like to just read part of what they recommend in a situation where a lot is illegally subdivided, but the lot would have qualified as a legal lot at the time if properly approved. And they recommend that it is the opinion of the Office of the Property Rights Ombudsman that a local government adopt a reasonable method of approving unrecorded or illegitimate land divisions in order to avoid imposing inequitable hardships on those who purchase property in good faith. This is also a reasonable approach to resolve very real situations. Land transfers and land records are not always neat and tidy. Though ignorance are simply because of, of convenience, property is sometimes divided and deeded without following the proper rules. These discrepancies are often, often not discovered for many years when it is impractical to undo the sales and deeds. So what I'm, I'm proposing to submit, and that I will submit, is essentially a recommendation based off the county or the state property rights ombudsman, a change to at least have a process to do a post-approval of what up to this point has always been considered illegal subdivisions, which in the county, right now, there's hundreds of lots that had they been properly platted, would have been approved. So my hope, I guess with making this comment, is just that you know that this is something that I'm working on. We have about 10 property owners for this specific area that, that we're hoping to work this through. Well, my hope is that we can have some support where needed, or at least have communication when needed, to, to at least have a conversation about creating of this post-approval process for lots that were illegally subdivided but would have been approved had a proper subdivision map been filed when the lots were sold. So that's the end of my comment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. The next public comment will come from Aaron Bullen. Aaron, we will invite you to unmute. Go ahead.
Hey, thank you. I just wanted to make a generic comment in support of the, I don't know exactly what the official titles were being used, but the county administrator position or some form of that proposal. I know all the details are yet to be worked out and those may end up being worked out in January, but it, it seems kind of difficult to work in there between the creases of the three current policy advisors. But I, I think overall, if we didn't have administrative assistant positions attached to commissioners, that would, you know, help, you know, foster a sense of, of unity in, in purpose and goals in the county commission. I, you know, I, I think that ideally it's not an increased cost or increased headcount proposal, or if there could be some lateral moves between the current senior policy advisors and, you know, some of the positions under a director of administrative duties, that, that might be good. I, I just think that, you know, not many other counties use our current model. And when I heard this proposal, you know, it, it sounded like what's, what's best for the, the county in terms of getting those more administrative duties done, working with the county mayors and, you know, responsibilities like that. And that's all.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything? Do we have any other public comment? Then we will go ahead and move into our closed meetings. Thank you, everyone.